Okay, meeting call to order. Roll call.
Dr. Robinson, here.
Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Buck, here.
Mrs. Webb, here.
Mr. James.
Here. All the present. Do you have adoption of the... Anything need to be changed after this time? Or added? If not, can we get adoption of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Been moving, excepting all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comments, we don't have any? Recognitions and presentation?
Mr. James, Mr. Lord, 5.1 is the monthly data report that Nattis High School is required to submit to the board because of their status, TSI status, technical support status. And so, nothing has changed because of the last report because there is no new data. So, we're just presenting that for the board's attention as part of the board.
Okay.
Do we need to take action on it?
No, sir.
Now, we have approve of May 21st, 2024 special call meeting. Approve of May 21st, 2024 regular meeting minute. And approve of May 31st, 2024 special call meeting. And approve of June 12th, 2024 special call meeting. And approve of June 12th, 2024 board retrieval minute.
I move that little 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5. Second.
Been moving, excepting all in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass is 5-0. Now, with Conson Island. Conson Island, anything on there that need to be changed to action? If not, can get approval?
I move that we approve of Conson Island.
Second.
They've been moving, excepting all in favor?
Aye.
Now, it passes 5-0. Okay, 8.1.
8.1, Mr. James, Mr. Lord, it's much personnel recommendations that you have before you. We have been very busy trying to make certain that all of our classroom positions are filled, all of our district positions are filled. And so, it is the recommendation that the board approves the personnel recommendations and...
And the salary schedule? And the salary schedule is on there also?
The salary schedule is there. There's just... And we didn't present that salary schedule for all the positions in the district. That includes our allocations from the state along with local supplements for teachers, as well as all of other positions. So, it's the recommendation that the board approves that salary schedule.
Right. I was asking that for you because you indicated...
Yes, sir.
Everything except the salaries on the plan, but the salary will be an order.
Right.
Action that you...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me ask one thing regarding the salary schedule. Does anything... Has there been any kind of major change in the salary schedule?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right.
Out of promotion that we would approve, item number 8.1?
Second.
Been moving, excepting all in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass is 5-0. 8.2, approve opening bids for 15 minutes. All right, yeah. Mr. Baker, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Baker's coming out.
Everybody man flying up court.
Would that be possible?
Yeah. Go through it. All right.
Need to make that...
Okay.
So, we're gonna call section 11, township 3 north, range 5 west.
Anyone being on section 11?
How y'all doing?
How you do, sir?
Pretty good.
Uh, are you Ben?
Yes, sir.
All right. We got one bid on section 11, township 3 north, range 5 west. All right. So, this section consists of 438 acres. The bid is $30.50 per acre for an annual rent of $13,359. And there is a certified check enclosed for the first year's rent.
And that's the only bid we have?
That is the only bid we have.
Are they the present? Leasees?
He's right.
All right, I mean... Is he the current?
Yes, sir. Right here.
What was that last name, please?
Is that with them?
It's all... Ben Hopkins. Mandela Cunningham.
Let me ask you another question. Is that equal to what?
That there were...
Paying the money here or is it...
The minimum bids published were...
Published.
And it does make...
It does make the minimum.
Do we need to take action on it?
Yeah, I still want... We accept... What it on the bid? Is that right?
Yeah.
Call for a glass?
Oh, you should have called for a glass.
Yeah.
And you said...
I second.
We had...
Is it all in?
Yeah, all in.
All in favor? All right, pass is 5-0. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Move on to section 29. Township 5 north, range 3 west. One bid in hand. All right. We've got one bid for section 29. Township 5 north, 3 west. All right. This is a tract that consists of... Scott Lindsey is the present leaseholder, I think.
Yes, sir.
All right, this tract consists of 752 acres. The bid is for $28 per acre for an annual rent of $21,056.
Fifty-six cents?
Twenty-one thousand fifty-six dollars.
Eight.
Eight, yes. Got an official certified check for the first year's rent, so it's in proper form.
Can it meet the minimum requirement?
Yes, sir.
I move for the...
I second.
Okay, you're moving, excepting all in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass is 5-0. Thank you all.
As usual, we'll get the leases put together and get in touch with you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Section 14? Section 14?
All right. We have one bid for... From Lake Mary Planting Company.
13?
Lake Mary Planting Company. Section 14, township 3 north, range 4 west. 200... 223 acres. The one bid for the 223 acres is $36.24, which totals an annual rent of $8,081.52. There's cashier's check made payable to the district in that sum.
So, this is the present?
This is the present, Leslie, yes.
I move for the check because the... Second.
Been moving, excepting all in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass is 5-0.
So, the next one we'll move into... That's two bidders. And the next two in order start with section 16. So, they got a list here. So, we're gonna pull section 16, 5 north, range 1 west, 442 acres. All right. We have two bids here. Y'all all together or...
No, sir. I'm alone. They're together, I'm alone.
Gotcha. So, we got two bids on section 16, 5 north, 1 west, 442 acres. The first one is from Joel Strahan. Mr. Strahan submitted a bid at $15.09 for a total annual payment of $66.71. Uh, 660...
Nope.
Six thousand, 671 dollars.
I think the same.
Why don't you say it? All right.
Was it a check?
Yes, certified check. Second bid is from Mr. Forbes. Mr. Forbes bids $25 even per acre for a total annual rent of $11,051.75. And there's a certified check payable to the district in that sum.
So... The present leasing?
Please.
I'm sorry.
Are you the present, Leslie?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay. He's also the high bidder.
He's also the high bidder?
No.
He's the high bidder.
I'm sorry. Mr. Strahan's the high bidder?
No, Forbes. Forbes.
Now, I'm sort of confused. Uh... So... Mr. Forbes, raise your hand. Which one? All right. So, you're the high bidder and the current, Leslie? Is that... All right. So, Mr. Strahan, Mr. Forbes outbid you, but you have the right to match that bid at $25 per acre for annual rental payment of $11,051.75.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you gotta make your decision here and now.
Question, how can it be paid? Can it write a check? Can it be cashed? Balance difference?
The...
About to do this again. I know the cashier's check.
No. The district within the week, if you'll bring the additional funds that may make the difference up, they'll accept that. Your lease probably won't be ready by Friday, but we'll get it ready and you can sign it. But you can get the funds here in a regular check.
Okay. Fair enough.
So, did you understand what the law is?
Yes, sir.
That allows this to take place?
Right, yes, sir. And so, bidding's done?
Pardon?
The bidding is done, though?
Yes. Since he... He is the leasing.
Yes, sir.
And so, he has the option of matching.
Right. But I don't have the option to go more, right?
No, you don't.
Yes.
Write proof?
You don't. Because there may be instances later that there will be an option. But to have an option, there must be three people that submitted a bid. In this case, there are only two, so we can't...
Yes.
Board can't call for an option. So, it does happen, but not in this instance.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Out of promotion that we would accept the... Bid of Mr....
It's the matching...
The matching?
Bid from Mr....
Bid from Mr. Strahan.
Strahan. His... For $11,051.75.
I just see it.
Yes, sir.
Been moving, excepting all in favor? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
I will return your check to you right now, today. All right. So, another section 16, township 4 north, range 4 west. Yeah, he's... I just need it off.
Would you put him out there?
No, I just said if you want to, you can go.
You made him all right.
He didn't want to stay.
Say again.
Leap, late, sad lady.
Yeah. Yeah. He's gonna bring his...
What was the total? Excuse me, $11,000?
Eleven...
$11,051.75.
We don't wanna put you through that.
Yes, we keep the check for the amount you submitted. You just have to bring the balance.
We don't wanna overwork you down.
All right, so... So, we now have a 220-acre tract, section 16.
Did you want to...
No.
Okay.
All right. Section 16, township 4 north, range 4 west, 220 acres. I've got two bidders. Do I have two bidders or...
Both.
Of course. All right. Lake Mary Planting is the current, Leslie. All right. This is the bid of Lake Mary Planting Company. Makes a bid on 220 acres of $30 per acre for an annual rent of $6,600. And there's a certified check in the appropriate amount made payable to the school district. The second bid is from Mr. McManus. Two bidders. All right. Mr. McManus bids $45.91 on the 220 acres for an annual rental payment of $10,100 per year.
What was the first?
$6,600. Mr. McManus's check is in proper form and in proper amount.
Is he the present leasing?
No. Lake Mary Planting is the current, Leslie. They were the lower bidder, $30. They have the option to meet Mr. McManus's bid if they choose to. Yeah. So... They confirm that they're going to match that bid, so it'll go to Lake Mary Planting at $10,100. That's $45.91 per acre. And I'm gonna return your check to you.
Out of promotion that we would accept the bid of Lake Mary...
Lake Mary. So... Bill, you clear on what we'll do? You just make up the difference and then we'll give the lease to you?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
I'm George. Yeah. Yes.
We'll always...
I can give a personal check now for the difference so I can send a certified within the week. What would you prefer?
Just make up the difference within the week. And then with a certified check, if that's convenient. If not, you... Company check will be fine and we'll get the lease to you sometime.
Personal check, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. But I'm Mr. Ridge, once I come back, but it'd be easier to just start to cook and give one now, right?
Do it or help yourself.
Okay.
Absolutely. Sounds like a good line.
Tony, you wanna go with it?
I'll go with it.
We don't care, Nick. You can't have Dallas man named James. 36.
All right. So, this is the last of the two bid tracts. It's section 6, township 8 north, range 2 west, 90 acres, 90.15 acres. Mr. Gode is the current, Leslie, right?
Yes, sir.
I have a bid from Mr. Leonard. Mr. Leonard, L E O, N A R D. All right. The bid from Mr. Gode is in the amount of the minimum bid, $13 for 90.15 acres. Totals $1,171.95 for an annual rent. There's a check in proper form for the first year's rent made payable to the school district. All right, this is Mr. Leonard's bid. All right. Mr. Leonard's bid is for the 90.15 acres, $19.75 per acre for a total annual rent of 1,780.46. Sure of capitalism? Not sure. Anybody got it yet?
That's correct.
Okay. Here's the problem. Mr. Leonard has submitted a personal check, not a cashier or a bank check, which, you know, technically means that it didn't comply with the bid instructions and really aren't supposed to consider his bid. But... I think that's what the statute says.
We only have... We have two bids.
We have two bids on this one, one of which is a non-qualifying bid because of the checking.
And that's what the statute says. And so, our P is not... A bid to...
Say again? Yeah. I'm afraid so.
So, I mean, you need to go for it, except...
I mean, I hate to pass on the money.
So, it's not from the leasing?
Not the current, Leslie? No, it's not from the current, Leslie. This is a completed bid from somebody new. All right. So, I'm sorry.
I will allow the motion, right?
Yeah.
Out of promotion that we would accept the...
Yes.
The bid that's in compliance with the law.
All right, sir. That's a bid from David Gode for $13 per acre, total rent of $1,171.95.
Been moving, excepting all in favor?
Here's...
Oh, we just mail it in?
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So, there are five bids submitted on this tract. Has 157.7 acres. Section 12.
You wanna make sure that everybody understands that you have five bids?
We don't know that yet.
I thought you said you had five.
We do have five. But the question whether it'll be up to y'all and over.
Oh. But I'm... If there are five bids and the highest bid is... I don't... We have to...
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
Oh, you don't have to?
Okay. We can just accept the highest bid?
Or you can conduct an option.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So... Let's see. I've got five bids on section 12, 157.7 acres from Mr. McManus, from Mr. Gatwood. Two here are representing Marlin LLC. Thank you. So, Mr. Ashley and Mr. Johnson. So, we'll get started with Mr. McManus's bid. Mr. McManus bids $22.51 for 157 acres for a total of $3,550. Again, the certified check is in proper form and... Again, the, uh, certified check is in proper form and I play a little bit of the school district. Mr. Gatwood submitted a official check, uh, twenty-five point five two dollars, twenty-five dollars fifty-two cents per acre for a total of four thousand twenty-five dollars seventy-six cents in annual rent. Check is proper. This is the bid of Marlin LLC. Uh, Mr. Mar, I'm sorry, Marlin, uh, bids sixty-three dollars forty-two cents for the one hundred and fifty-seven point seven acres for a total annual, uh, payment of ten thousand dollars. The, uh, check is in proper form. We have the bid of Mr. William Ashley. Mr. Ashley is the current lessor. Mr. Ashley bids, uh, twenty dollars twenty cents for one hundred and fifty-seven point seven acres for annual rent of three thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars fifty-four cents. His check is proper form, proper amount. Mr. Johnson, is somebody here representing him? Mr. Johnson. His address is Hesmer, Louisiana. Bids thirty-five dollars per acre for one hundred and fifty-seven acres for a total annual rent of five thousand five hundred nineteen dollars fifty cents. Check is in proper form and proper amount. Alright, so, can you kind of give me those, can you give me the order, highest to last? Marlin LLC, two thousand.
Fifty-five nineteen, fifty-six. Four thousand, twenty-five thousand, seventy-six cents.
Two, four thousand.
I'm sorry, four thousand, twenty-five, seventy-six cents. Thirty-five.
There actually is a quarter.
Thirty-one eighty-five, fifty-four cents.
Alright, so, the first question would be to Mr. Ashley as the, uh, currently, say, do you want to match the bid of Marlin?
Okay.
Okay. So that is, he's gonna increase his to an annual rent of ten thousand dollars, which is sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents per acre, sixty-three forty-two cents.
Let me ask you, of course, to make sure I understand. I think I did. You're saying even when there is more than two bidders, the person who gives the... still has the option of matching the high bid?
That's right. And then if, if the board decides to call or conduct, uh, an auction and, uh, they are participants, the, the auction starts at the sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents per acre. So, uh, it would next be the question, uh, with the, uh, with the folks here, does the board want to take action to, to have us conduct an auction here and now?
Look for some counsel in here.
Well, the, the reason it's in the statute is if you have enough interest, uh, three of these bidders, obviously, Mr. Johnson's not here. So, he, he wouldn't be able to participate in, uh, an auction, do you? But with these number of bidders, if there are three or more who want to bid, if your effort is to get the per acre price up beyond sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents. So, are there...
How about...
Mr. McManus is out, so the remaining three, uh, are you interested in conducting, uh, an auction?
No. I thought the high, uh, the, uh, I thought I had the right to match the high bidder. I got to go for an auction, I don't understand that.
Well, it's in the statute and the board has the right to call for it. But, um, at this point, uh, it does not, what it, Marlin, even if Marlin says they do want it, I don't think we have enough to conduct an auction. It'd be only two bidders. Am I getting that straight?
Yes.
Alright.
So, there were three of you all didn't want to participate in the auction, right?
We would.
We don't.
Marlin would.
Yeah.
Just Marlin would.
Marlin?
Yeah.
Okay, you the high, you are the highest bidder now.
Right.
Well, Mr. Ashley, he's the matching bidder.
He matches easily.
Oh, okay.
You cannot have an auction if we just can't get the... It has to be through...
And Mr. Johnson has to be present, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm afraid he is, but I'm not...
You're not representing him.
No.
So, uh, I mean, we certainly could consider his bid, but to participate in the auction...
He has to be here.
Yeah.
Well, long as clear that we have to take the leasing's highest.
Yeah, he's matched.
It's the highest and best bidder. I mean, that would be something.
This is moving, that's all the papers. Alright, there's the five bids.
Alright, this is Mr. Ashley's certified check. He'll have to bring the difference. He's going up to...
So, just, I have a question. So, just to be clear on that, so, three people have to be enlightened, participate in the auction? Or just three bidders been present?
Three, three bidders who submitted a bid, who are willing to participate.
They have to be willing to, yeah, it's not over three bidders, period.
No.
Initially.
No.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
If, if, if there are three or more...
Right.
Then it can be done in a way.
We would have preferred that.
Alright, okay. So, you have Mr. Ashley.
This is Ashley.
Who's Mr. Ashley? So, alright.
Sorry, I gotta get to know everybody.
I mean, you have to take these checks.
Have a vote determination. Out of the motion, we would have a vote determination. Out of the motion, if we're going to execute a session, wouldn't at the appropriate time discuss the potential to be...
Okay, we'll pass now with eight point three.
Good evening, Mr. James, we have the board agreeing, uh, relation to the C E B. Language speech, reading more. Flowing plus. School psychology. Academic Alliance Consulting Firm. Professional Development Behavior Specialty. Academic Alliance Consulting Firm. Professional Development Academy. Rose Monster Fulton. Professional Development and, uh, and School Psychology. The Baby Group, Education Group, Professional Development. That's all for me.
Need a motion, so they can, uh, review those, um, bids and come back with, uh...
A move that we, uh, allow to go through the bids and come back with recognition.
Yeah, eight point four.
Mr. James Bimblin, board, this guy down green, uh, eight point four is requested. Uh, the C E B is an open bid for a committal and contractual service.
Okay, this is from, uh, Dr. Kristen, Kristilin Turney, T U R E N E Y, for Instructional Support Services, Principal Coaching. Uh, reading, horizons. Curriculum. Resources. News E L A. News, News E L A, curriculum resource. Mastery prep. Curriculum resource. McGraw Hill. Curriculum resource. Degree education. Instructional support. Okay, instructor, which is Canvas, that is for curriculum resource. Vela Education Group, Instructional Support Services. He is first, Instructional Support Services. If then solution, Instructional Support Services. Uh, C T three? C T three is Principal Coaching. Curriculum and coaching. Curriculum for instructional, yeah. Age of Learning. Instructional Materials.
I don't know what we can do without federal dollars.
Curriculum growth. Instructional support and principal coaching. Sabas, S A B B A S. Instructional resources. Climbing, higher heights. Instructional support.
How many people go through all that stuff, doctor?
It'll probably be about a team of five.
Okay.
Renaissance. Instructional material.
It's the same thing? All the things the same thing?
Can I get that?
Try to get that money.
They know, they know that money's up there.
I'll meet y'all home.
I still have cell phone.
Instructional support service. Did it? That's it?
That's it?
I moved that way instead of the bids. And for some, read all of them and come back with things. Be back next month with a recommendation. And we apologize to you.
You can leave that right there.
Okay.
I know.
They've been moving all in favor. It paid the five zero. Doctor Rod, you know what you're going with.
I do, I hope.
You go with yourself, huh? They made a motion, man made a motion that you.
No worries, no worries. No worries.
You mean you're going to be who we go with? Okay, alright, eight point, we made vote for eight point five, man. Mr. Bird. Come on, ladies and gentlemen. Superintendent, your counsel.
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks for your presentation.
You have a for you to prove the claim documents and acceptance of financial reports.
Right.
Within your documents are, um, they're part of the files, so this. All the claim documents for May tenth and May thirty first. Additionally, the May twenty twenty four financial reports, expenditure budgets, and capital project summaries were included as well. If the army needs questions, it is recommended that the board approve the aforementioned required reports as required.
Eight point five, yes. If they're moving.
Seven.
Seven all in favor. Mr. Bird again.
If this one, your doctor just make a motion to approve it, it's the long process.
Eight point.
This is the heaviest one.
Okay, if eight point six.
Approval of general liability insurance.
Alright.
Is, uh.
If they're moving seven all in favor, it paid the five zero, Mr. Bird again.
Eight point seven, that's first. And you have a for you bid award, depository services renewal. Basically, permission was granted on February twenty, twenty twenty four to advertise for depository services. The advertising was granted for two weeks, April seventeen, April twenty four. The new bank deposit agreed will begin July first, twenty twenty four, and will expire June thirty, twenty twenty seven. Included in your.
Three years?
Three years, yes, sir. In- included in your binder, um, there's this memo, if it's there, that's an easy one to look at. So we reached out to all of the local banks and we included documentation to show that we reached out to those banks. And we only received one bid, and that is from our current bank, which is Home Bank. They have a very favorable rate within this, with that proposal.
What is their rate compared to last year?
Compared to last year, it is, um, it's two point seven for this upcoming term, starting July first. The fixed rate last year was point three five from Home Bank, and Cordia Bank was point two five. So, um, it's definitely a favorable. Favorable amount. So, yes, sir. That's all we is recommending unless we have questions. This is superintendent's recommendation that we award the depository agreement, this is the twenty three, twenty, twenty five, twenty seven, alright.
Hold down the approval that it wants it. Second.
They're moving seven all in favor. Alright, there's five zero, eight point eight.
This is a record, isn't it? Okay, that's two more, yeah. This is their proposal for the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty seven financial audits. According to state law, we can only have the same firm audit us for three years in a row. And there's a required managerial test. Silas Simmons just completed, but it's still in review, it's not filed yet. Uh, the last year of that audit of their reflection of twenty twenty two, state auditor is still reviewing and approving that right now. But start with twenty three, I've got to find a new firm. And as we all know and heard earlier, that, um, this, there's a, there's a shortage of resources out there. The firm that, um, that the business office superintendent's recommending that we go with is called Novum Advisory P L L C. They are on a, they are on the approved state listing. What the state auditor is supposed to do, is contract it out to various firms because they don't have manpower to get everybody. And so they have a list of approved C P A firms to do the audits for all of the municipalities and student districts. And this Novum Advisory firm is actually includes many C P As from, it's the auditor's office. So their proposal is included, I can tell you that their rates are good. And it is definitely recommended that we, um.
Where are they located?
They are in. Madison, okay, yeah, Madison is the, yeah.
Did you say that, uh, Tom McTray, she served, I, I know her, she's, she was a different state auditor.
Oh, that's right.
She, she was. She started this firm, she started this.
I know that we approved the, all that server contract.
They're moving seven all in favor. Pass the five zero, eight point nine.
Eight point nine, it is, this is the approval of the accounting system services agreement. We've been working with Integrity Software and Time Trust since two thousand and eighteen. There have been some changes out there in the Nascar standards, accounting standards, when it deals with software leases. And so, as a part of that, our current software provider is now requiring their clients to have three-year contracts. And so, this contract, this agreement is in front of you, it's included, and it's definitely recommended that we accept them as our. Accept the agreement as our financial accounting software.
You say it's a three-year contract?
It's gonna be three, yeah, it's the first time that they made this, this type move, so, yeah. It's been a year here, up until changes. So they, that's for them to do it, that's how they, that's right. So they're saying, hey, we're proposing to do a three-year agreement as due end of this month.
So we already have to deploy it?
Yes, we use them, yes, sir. It's just been a year and year and so forth.
A year and year, but now they have to have three, yeah.
Now they're saying we want to do three years and.
Is the fee relatively the same?
Well, um, it goes, it went up a little bit this year, it went up about six percent. It went up about six percent over, over last year. But they say in their agreement, if they up the price, like they're, they got a right to increase it every year. If they up it, then we will have an out if we choose to. That's how.
We out, we have penalty of five thousand dollars.
It does say, it just says, you know, you have, you, oh, no, no, it says, I'm sorry, they're right. You can, you can opt out without penalty. If they, if they go up.
But if we want to just get out.
Then it's a penalty, yeah, if we go out, if we just want to get out, yes.
Second. They're moving seven all in favor. Alright, pass the five zero, thank you, Mr. Bird. Eight point ten.
Eight point ten is. For school of these facilities. Um, let me say that for this first request, um. It is dated for June eighteen, but the camp was not held. And we have not received a return from, um, that representative to give that call. So I need to follow up with that, that organization to see if they are requesting a different name or they're just, you know, opting not to host a conference. The second request is for this high school dance team to use the activity school gym for, uh, fundraising activities. So it's recommendation that the board approve the, the food resource.
Is that our dance team?
Yes.
So, second.
They're moving seven all in favor. Alright, pass the five zero, eight point eleven.
Eight point eleven. This is, this is the board, it's the recommendation that the board approves the twenty, that the board approves the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five soccer, volleyball, junior high football, and basketball schedules.
So.
They're moving seven all in favor. Alright, pass the five zero, eight point twelve.
Eight point twelve is a recommendation that the board approved, uh, for us to continue, uh, to use the services of a line grant writing and grant management services for the twenty four, twenty five school.
Is that a missed count?
Yes, sir.
Is that for a year?
Yes, sir, it is.
So, has she been bringing in?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Another grant for her.
Yes.
Just been moving seven all in favor. Alright, pass the five zero, eight point thirteen.
Eight point thirteen is, uh, the request for the board to accept. Recommendation for the board to approve the grant agreement and the acceptance of funds from the Laura Bush Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars to be used at Natchez High School. Uh, for library resources.
So.
They're moving seven all in favor. Five zero, eight point thirteen.
Eight point fourteen is the recommendation to approve of request to add job description for behavior specialists. Um, the behavior specialists, um, to be in contact with about thirty five students, retiring the children with autism, um, to teach them behavior, instructions, coping skills, and things in that area because we do not have the supports of like A D A therapists in the area. So we're gonna try to start small and try to build to meet those needs.
So.
Second.
They're moving seven all in favor.
You know, is that easy to do?
Do you think it's gonna be there?
Okay, eight point fifteen.
This is, um, eight point fifteen is a recommendation that the board approved, uh, for Cathedral, uh, there, uh, uh, to enter to an agreement with S I. S L C for school improvement and student achievement, uh, so, so, so. And remember that we are a global agency for, uh, federal funds for this particular school.
I know, with the second.
They're moving seven all in favor. There's a five zero, eight point sixteen.
Mr. James, member of the board, we ask you for, um, approval of the memorandum of, of understanding between the Natchez Avenue School District, uh, Natchez High School and King Daughters Medical Center for Athletic Training and, uh, Marketing. King Daughters Medical Center, uh, has provided an athletic trainer and marketing proposal for, uh, Natchez High School. Uh, they will provide an athletic trainer to, uh, cover our student athletes, uh, during the games. They will have the right to, um, advertise and pay and place signage, um, at our sports, uh, venues. Uh, so it is recommendation of the superintendent that the board approved the memorandum of understanding between, uh, Natchez Avenue School District and, uh, King Daughters Medical Center for Athletic Training and Marketing.
We had them for a number of years at all, and things were, we had trainers that we needed, uh, away and, and home, so, uh, so.
And actually, they are, um, employing the athletic trainers who we have had for seventy years. So they just moved to another home.
Second.
They're moving seven, all in favor? Alright, pass the five zero, eight point seventeen.
Eight point seventeen is for discussion, uh, and to, for the board to give me direction as to, uh, their wishes for the next step of this project. Uh, as you all are aware, we have finally received approval from, uh, Mississippi Department of Education, Department of Federal Programs to proceed with, um, our performing arts facility.
I have seven. I have seven favor.
Now we're just gonna, uh, add to and clarify, but not clarify, give information. Mr. James and myself, and of course, Mrs. McDonald, we've been working on this diligence. And, uh, we are glad to see that it's been approved by the state. Hopefully, uh, this will be something that, uh, once we have, uh, make, help make it happen. It'll be something that can be, be a benefit to the community and to the kids over the long term. It's gonna take a while, but we had to work real hard to get this approved. So, uh, I want, I want to thank, uh, Xandra and of course, other James, we've been working behind, without you all knowing.
We know.
But, but it's something I think all of us agree could be real beneficial for the children in this community, for the children.
Let's reiterate that that's been a goal of this board.
For another year.
For a number of years. So the newsome was part of that drive to, to have a performing arts. Center and area, and I think that.
Well, I, what I'm gonna say is, I think when we first started talking about it, it was about new equipment, right? Like band equipment or whatever.
Uh, the, the musical instruments were a part of our application, if I'm not mistaken, for S two.
Right.
So, were any purpose?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I got to see a drum. And actually, I didn't know the drums had plastic on that top part of it. But, and, and this equipment is real old that I saw. It, the, um, the inside is torn, but then it's a whole lot of other different kind of tapes on it. So I was wondering when we do this school of the arts, was there gonna be new equipment in there, like for the band and stuff?
In our allocation, the board, um, ensured that there was money allocated for the purchase of instruments. Now we draw, I'm not the drawing person, but on piano organ, I can handle the drums, but I know that drum heads burst regularly and have to be replaced. And so that's just a, just a maintenance issue that we have.
And then, and then with some drums, to get the tone that they want, and put tape on the drums.
It's what? Put tape on the drums in order to get a certain sound.
Oh, okay.
We also, we've already made.
Bring it up, so, uh, we will be aware of the thought and come quick.
I mean, and I know, and I, the board is aware too, that the music and the string orchestra has already had a concert at the Little Theater. Those were our instruments that we provided for them.
Correct.
That's correct, and we.
So we're moving in that direction is what I'm saying, we need, we need more place for that. We, we short, the new school, the new high school needed, when we built it, it needed more places that we didn't, couldn't afford, is that correct, Tony?
That's correct.
And so that is why we want to move towards Steckler, alright?
And so we're, we're currently using Steckler for music, for band and culture and so forth. So this, this, uh, approval is going to allow us to make certain that the construction is, uh, going to support more spacing to mitigate the spread of the, the virus. To mitigate the spread of the, the virus, because that's what our test of funds are, uh, supposed to do, the purpose of those funds. And so to your question regarding instruments, Mr. Fields and I have met with, uh, Mr. Ford and Mr. Hill, and Mr. McAllister about their plans to expand performing arts. And we know that they've done awesome jobs so far, and so within the, probably within the next month, we will bring a proposal to you for additional, uh, instruments in order, because the goal is to start our children early.
Yeah, that's what my.
Let me, uh, add too, because it's, in addition to the Stepper building that we, that we've been approved, we've already asked for, uh, some work at Robert Lewis. We do not know if in fact all of it's gonna be approved, but we do have those funds, uh, available to us that the state did approve, us utilizing some of our S S funds. But I want, just wanted to make sure everybody understand, so it's kind of a, 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 a. Floating kind of thing, it's not, we don't know exactly what everything is, but we have been working with the architect too, and we, and, and of course, I guess, we need to have a motion to instruct the board attorney to come up to work out a contract with the architect, because that's normally what we need to do. Uh, which would be three, three A. He's been working with us for the last couple of months and helping us to develop, uh, this thought that we've been, been pursuing. So we need to, because we have a September deadline, as we've all, all of us aware, we have a September deadline, uh, as far as getting a commitment of these funds.
Right.
Okay, and, and so we need to move as speedily as possible in order to make sure that we don't lose out in, on this five or six or seven million dollars, whatever we may have, in order to put, if, uh, to develop a step into a first class facility, even though it be smaller, and all that kind of thing. But at least in its right, uh, in, in the area by, by all of the other kinds of thing, by both schools and what have you. So it's gonna be something good that I think, and all of us think, that can be helpful for our community for years to come. So I'd like to offer motion that we would have the board attorney, conjunction with our superintendent, uh, to, uh, develop a contract, negotiate with, with, uh, three A. In order to, to move forward, uh, on this particular project.
They're moving seven all in favor.
Let me, let me say this, and I know, uh, this may not be, I want, I want y'all to know that. Representative Daniel the Cocker, helped us a lot with what we getting this approved. And I know I probably shouldn't say that publicly at this particular point, but she did, okay? So I believe in giving credit where it's due, you know? So I don't, I don't know if, if we didn't have her support, or what's the thing she did, whether it would have been approved.
Right.
Because we had made this request some time ago, but, uh, and hopefully, and Xandra, well, I won't get into the other thing that Wayne approved. Cause we haven't given up on him yet, ever Xander. Okay. We're gonna keep out, tell them to the middle.
Okay, now we're at nine. On that review of the nine one S O, with Fields.
Uh, Mr. James, members of the board, I just have, um, in your, uh, packet or your binder, uh, the twenty four, twenty five student handbook and the suicide prevention intervention handbook, just for your review, uh, for action at the next meeting.
We would like to thank our councils, a, a team of guidance councils who have reviewed that suicide prevention intervention handbook and have updated based upon, uh, information that they received from their national, uh, organization. So we appreciate their efforts, and Ms. Monica King, who led, who led that.
Okay, nine point two.
Yeah, Ms. Butler is, I think, maybe gone, uh, in your board binder, uh, is the updated, uh, information on our S S three. Um, grant funding as Mr. Wesley said, grant funding ends September thirtieth, and so Ms. Butler and their team have been working along with our administrators, uh, to make certain that those priorities that the board has established, that those priorities are met prior to their deadline. Yeah, I apologize because Ms. Butler has been working with Xander for the, this, in his entire, we have to get additional information to Jackson and so forth and so on, and they've worked overtime, okay? Absolutely, so we, we thank Ms. Butler, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Jackson Anderson, for their diligent work, because I assure you, it has been a task. Oh, I know.
All right, and board calendar, anything that need to be added, taken off, we do it for separate year, none of them. Nine point four.
Mr. James, I never know a fix.
Nine point five.
You didn't give a chance to think about it.
I would like to reiterate every time, please stay safe, I know y'all for the holiday, I mean for the summer, stay safe because the degrees are a hundred degrees or more. Also, so many people that I know is coming down with COVID. COVID is not gone, so stay safe in that area too, thank you.
No, sir.
Go on vacation.
They all vacate, oh.
Close the termination.
Want to close the termination? Second.